Hello, welcome to the April NHD Subcommittee Meeting. Thank you all for joining us. I am Kate Gallego and I'm joined by Councilwoman Laura Pastor and Councilwoman Dani Valenzuela. Councilwoman Sal Deciccio serves on the Subcommittee but is unable to join us today. We'll begin with a call to the public, but we have no cards, so we'll move on to the approval of the meeting minutes from our March 1st meeting.
I move approval of the March 1st, 2016 Neighborhoods Housing and Development Subcommittee Minutes.
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We do have a consent agenda, but I did have one question on item 13, so would entertain a motion on items five through 12.
I move items five through 12.
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item number 13 is the Annual Action Plan submission to HUD, and this includes several important federal programs related to housing and the Community Development Block Grants. And so the report was available for councilmembers to review, and we're doing a lot of great things with Community Development Block Grants, some of which we just moved forward today. As we go forward to next year, I thought it would be a good opportunity to talk about priorities. There are lots of great things we can do with this particular funding source, and there were, in budget hearings, we've heard a lot of feedback from folks who want to see more on graffiti and blight. And then another priority that has come up often is the city has a very ambitious plan related to shade, including the canopy coverage and trees. And we've learned that other communities have used Community Development Block Grants as a funding source for that particular goal. It's something this Subcommittee has heard often in Reinvent Phoenix, particularly for low-income individuals who are going to work in our summer. It's a hot commute. You ideally want to have as much shade as possible. So I just wanted to talk with my colleagues about whether any of those were priorities we might want to look at more in an annual action plan as we go into next year. We are too late for this year, but I think it's a good time to talk about next year.
I think very good points, and you've been steadfast on these issues, and I think it's important, like you said, have a discussion early and often, and I support that.
Wonderful. And it's my understanding we don't necessarily need a motion if we just, you get the sense of the committee, or would you prefer a motion for next year's plan?
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, we certainly could take the direction of the Subcommittee. We already have allocations for both graffiti removal, and we have an enhancement open application where we can definitely dedicate and emphasize efforts towards a sheet tree canopy efforts during the next budget cycle.
Fabulous.
So no separate action is needed other than adopting the plan.
So basically, all of those pieces are embedded in the future, or part of the future budget?
Madam Chair, yes, Councilwoman. It's in there eligible, and we'll certainly take the direction of the Subcommittee to emphasize, will be able to report out those efforts, increase, we'll try and maximize graffiti efforts, as well as dedicate funds towards the tree and shade canopy.
Well, thank you. I move item 13.
I'll second with that understanding.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Moving on to item 14, Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. This is, I think, a lot of folks in the community will be excited about opening up the Section 8 list, but we've learned a lot and have heard a lot of interest from people about what, how we should prioritize a limited pool of vouchers, and what education and support is needed as we do this. So thank you to our Housing Director Cindy Stotler, who will provide an update.
Thank you Vice Mayor and members of the Subcommittee. With me today is Nicole Ayula, the manager over Section 8, and she will be co-presenting with me. So we're very excited to be here today to talk to you about the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. And I need the clicker. Thank you. I'll get on with the presentation here. The Housing Choice Voucher Program is by far the most popular public housing option that we have in our portfolio because it provides the program participants a choice of where to live. It's entirely funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and it provides a lease subsidy that's paid directly to the landlord as part of the program. The benefits of this program include, you know, it provides a means to, to the participants to get quality, affordable housing. It improves their living conditions. For individuals, they can choose to live near their jobs or near a transportation corridor. For families, they can choose to live in nice neighborhoods, near school districts that are better for their children, with neighborhood amenities like parks and libraries and grocery stores and things that many of us take for granted. It's a three-way partnership to make this successful, this whole program. It's, because it's funded by HUD, that means it's regulated by HUD, and there are many obligations and criteria that all three partners have to meet: the family that's on the voucher, the City of Phoenix running the program, and the owner of the property. Eligibility requirements for Section 8 include, number one, you have to be very low-income, meaning you have to make less than 50% of area median income. For an individual, that's about $22,050 a year, and for a family of four, it's $31,450 a year. So that gives you an idea of the income levels we're serving. You cannot have a history, a criminal history of serious drug violations, and you also cannot be a registered sex offender to participate in the voucher program. You have to have a clean rental history with public housing authorities throughout the nation, including Phoenix. You cannot have any outstanding debt to other public housing authorities or to Phoenix to get your voucher. And lastly, you have to be a U.S. citizen or be in an eligible immigration status to obtain a voucher. I'm going to turn it over to Nicole now to talk about specific obligations for the landlord families and the city.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. Thank you for allowing us to present on this program. It is an exciting time for the Section 8 program, as it has been 11 years since we closed our waitlist. And so I want to talk a little bit this morning about the landlord obligations that are required as a partner in that three-way triangle that Cindy indicated. It is important that they take the time to screen their tenants themselves, just like they would with anybody else in the private market. It's important that they comply with fair housing laws that is required by the program. It is also required that they maintain the unit, just like they would for any other person in the private market. It's outlined in their lease, and we hope that they manage to that. It's important that they register the property with Maricopa County, and so that we know that it is a rental property. It's important that they collect and enforce the rent from the program participant in a timely fashion, just like they would expect to receive it from the program participant in a timely fashion. And then one of the things that has come up recently, and this is to the credit of Vice Mayor Gallego, excuse me, is we have required that landlords provide to the program participants a copy of the CCNRs for their HOA community, so that they are aware of what their responsibilities are as it relates to the CCNRs. Okay. We're going to go. There we go. So next, we're going to talk a little bit about the family obligations. As a program participant, it is important that they comply with the lease. They are in a lease with a landlord, and they, the landlord is required to manage to that lease. So if it's in the lease, they need to hold them accountable to that. They're also required to abide by the federal regulations of the program. And so City of Phoenix staff are compliance officers, if you will, for lack of a better term, as it relates to the program regulations. It's important that they pay their rent on time. Whatever their rental portion is, which is 30% of their gross adjusted income, they need to pay that to their landlord directly on time. They are to provide and make sure that they have utilities turned on at all times, if that was a requirement of their particular situation, and that they supply any appliances that are not supplied by the landlord. It's important that they take care of the unit, and that they, you know, treat it as if it were their own. And it's important that they refrain from criminal activity. And that includes anybody that is invited to the home, the head of household, or any of the members of the program participant's voucher, so their fam, their children, those kinds of things. And it's important that they notify their housing program representative of any changes that they may have had in their household composition or in their income. Thank you. The City of Phoenix, as a public housing authority, administers a little over 6,700 different types of vouchers. The majority of those are the standard housing choice vouchers that you hear about. And we, as, our responsibility as a housing authority and our staff is really to determine the eligibility for individuals who are issued vouchers, to determine what their rental portion will be, and as a requirement of the program, they must conduct something called a rent reasonableness test, which determines whether or not the rental amount that a landlord is asking of them is reasonable based on the similar-sized unit in that area. We contract with a vendor called GoSection8.com to help do that automatic determination. Okay? We then have to execute the contract to the landlords. We have to inspect the unit. We have inspectors who go out and annually inspect units, and inspect units as someone is initially put on the program, and those are to federal housing quality standard, standards. Then we are required to enforce compliance, as I think I mentioned before, and make sure that the program participant is adhering to the requirements of the program. And then we have to make sure that we make our housing assistance payment, or we pay our rents to the landlord, and that's the final portion of the rent. Here you'll see an outline of our voucher allocation. So we have roughly 5,600, 5,600 regular housing choice vouchers that we administer. We have 863 VASH vouchers, which are specifically to address veterans homelessness. The City of Phoenix has been very fortunate in receiving several awards of those, and I think we've had up to eight at this point. We have 100 Family Unification Program vouchers, or FUP vouchers. Those are for individuals who are, have children who have been taken away and are in the Child Protective Services system. And the final barrier to them receiving their children back is housing. And so they are referred to us through DES. They go through the same background checks and eligibility processes that we have for our regular vouchers, but then they receive a voucher in order for them to receive housing for their families, so that they can get their children back. And then the 174 that you see are special vouchers, special populations. These are programs that were actually sunsetted by HUD that we now still administer, even though the programs have been sunsetted, but they are for single-room occupancies for homeless individuals.
175.
In that 100, and, I'm sorry, in that 5,600, a couple of years ago, this body awarded 275 vouchers specifically to address homelessness. And those are administered through an MIU that we have with the Human Services Department, and then contracted agencies through a coordinated entry program. And so right now, as it stands right now, we're about halfway through the process of allocating those vouchers, and it's been not very long. I think about nine months since we actually got it up and running. I think we're at about 100, somewhere between 150 and 160 of those that are actually allocated. And so that's been a very successful program. Okay. Thank you, Cindy. So the last piece I want to talk about here are local preferences, and this is how people are recruited off of the waitlist. We have, as a public housing authority, we have the ability to determine what are the priorities for our residents here in the City of Phoenix. And so the way that the preferences are set up in our administrative plan, which is our guiding document that has just been submitted to HUD, we, anybody who is displaced by law enforcement or in the Witness Protection Program, displaced by any city action, for instance, if we were doing a renovation or demolition of a property, one of our public housing properties, and we had to move people out, they would then get preference as well. And then the special needs populations. Special needs populations are those 275 homeless vouchers that we talked about. They fall into that kind of a category, okay? City of Phoenix residents, working families, and elderly and disabled would also be, get preferential treatment. They fall behind the special needs and the displaced and displaced for law enforcement, but they are also received a preference.
Back to me. As Nicole said earlier, it's been 11 years since we opened up the waitlist. So we are opening up the waitlist. We have gone through 30,000 applicants from 11 years ago. So we're opening up, I'm sorry, we're opening up the waitlist on May 23rd at 9:00 a.m. for online applications only. We are working with our sister departments, the library, the parks, human services, to ensure that all of the libraries, all the community centers, and all of the senior centers, and including our housing sites, are all open and ready to go with assistance on that day when we open. We are also, we have information on our website, so people can prepare. They have plenty of time to prepare because it's not until May 23rd. So we have lists of all the information they need for the application and a bunch of frequently asked questions, in case they are trying to prepare themselves for the list. We are going to leave it open for five days or up to 10,000 applicants. Based on what we're hearing, 10,000 applicants may happen in the first one or two days. But we'll, we'll see what happens and go with it. But if we get up to 10,000 applicants, we are closing the list as soon as we get to 10,000. 10,000 applicants will get us through the next four to five years, so that way we're going to have more turnover on the list and we can keep it more current. Having an 11-year list was just too long. People are on that list for 11 years. Things happen, they move, their circumstances change, and we want other people to have the opportunity to get on the list. So as you've heard, the Section 8 vouchers are the most popular public housing option. They are a vital part of our mission to provide quality, affordable housing to Phoenix residents and provide a pathway to self-sufficiency because it puts them near jobs and schools. We're very excited about the Section 8 program. It's a wonderful program. We're excited about the waitlist opening and getting new folks on the waitlist. That concludes our presentation, and we'll open it up for any questions or discussion.
Wonderful. Thank you for the update. We have some local preferences here, so as the City of Phoenix, veterans have been a high priority. The city is working very aggressively on domestic violence, and sadly, there was more bad news in our city again this week about domestic violence incidents. And there are many of these priorities at the Phoenix level that are also priorities at the federal level, so we have additional tools. How are we doing in terms of, do we have enough vouchers for veterans where that doesn't need to be a priority at this level? Do we have enough tools for domestic violence survivors where we don't need to make Section 8 one of those tools, or is this an important part of our arsenal?
Madam Chair, members of the Committee, I think that right now, as it stands, the 863 VASH Veterans Vouchers that we have, we are still in the process of leasing those up completely. I think that it has been a good partnership that we've had with the VA. And so while we certainly wouldn't turn down any additional vouchers if they were to come available, I think at this point, we're doing pretty well. Okay? As it relates to members, people who are finding themselves in domestic violence situations, I think that program participants who find themselves in domestic violence situations, there is Violence Against Women's Act, Violence Against Women Act. Thank you. Bow, I have such a hard time saying that. That is enforced as part of the program. Should we make a priority or a preference for members who, or citizens who have domestic, find themselves in domestic violence situations, it's certainly something that we can entertain. It's not, it's not written into our preferences as it stands right now. That would be a substantial amendment to our administrative plan, but it's certainly something that, at the direction of the Council, we could look at.
Wonderful. So it's too late for this?
It is too late for this year. We could, it's what's called a substantial amendment, which means we have to go through the open, the public process again. We'd have to open it back up, go through the comment period and so forth and so on in order to do so. But it's certainly doable. But it's, we've already completed that, and you've already voted on the plans, and they've been submitted for this year.
And could we collect that data, so when you apply, you can tell us whether you consider yourself to be a victim of domestic violence, and then that we would at least have that information, should we decide to make that change later?
We would have to look at how that would be facilitated, and we can do that and bring that back to the Committee.
Councilwoman Pastor.
So would that fall under special populations, or what is special populations?
Special populations are the vouchers that I said were allocated for the two sunsetted programs, specifically for single-room occupancy homeless individuals.
Okay. So if you're homeless but also in a domestic violence situation, then?
You could potentially. It wouldn't, it wouldn't disqualify you for that program. But it's not specifically for that.
Okay.
You wouldn't be disqualified for any of the vouchers.
I think it's slide, the last, the second to the last slide, the waitlist. Oh, cool. As you're speaking, you're speaking about doing this online application, and as we know, to qualify for a voucher, you're definitely in a severe poverty income. And so in my mind, I would not be able to afford internet or access to internet, or maybe even have anything other than maybe a phone, to be able to then apply online. And being able to, at least on my iPhone, to be able to see, or even have the capacity to sit and try to do it online, could be a challenge. So what other option do you have, other than online, if they do not have access and can't get to the library, community centers, any of those areas? How else could they apply?
Vice Mayor and members of the Subcommittee, we are still working with a vendor on trying to get something that works on a cellphone, a smartphone, thinking the same way, that it would be easier for folks to get on their smartphone. I have, I'm hopeful that we can get that to work. But as I said, we're working with the senior centers, and the parks, and the libraries, and community centers, and the housing sites. Folks have, you know, from working in this business and from the emails I get every day, many of these folks have much more access to computers than we may think they do, because they certainly communicate with us day in and day out on, on the computers. Specifically to the disabled community, we are meeting with Ability 360 this week to talk about their ability to access and how we can better facilitate access for the disabled community to get these applications input. So we're doing everything we can to try to reach out to the community, find them different ways of getting to computers, trying to get it on the cellphone, everything we can think of to allow them access.
And I'll just offer, if I may, that we have worked with our vendor to confirm, at this point, that you can have access on your cellphone.
I understand, working with a vendor, however, someone may not have access. And after just doing a youth summit and asking students what was their number-one challenge, it was access to technology. So I can imagine that if the student is with, living with their family, it's not as easy as we think it is. And those are some big, huge assumptions. So my question is, what other options do they have, other than online, to apply? Because if they can't get to the online, then what? And so I think that, I think there should be several options.
So Vice Mayor and members of the Subcommittee, one of the problems is, this has to be a very formal date and timestamp application process, absolutely in order of receipt. So we have to choose either paper or online, so that they are very formally in line, date and timestamp. If we choose to go paper, we would have 10,000 applicants coming to a city office, and managing that was, was not reasonable, in our opinion. We have researched what happens in other cities when they do in-person paper applications. There have been riots, there have been injuries, and there's long lines. You know, we had, just Friday, we had 600 folks show up for 56 new units at Eriterra to apply, 600. And they stood in line for probably at least 10, 11 hours. We had someone pass out, and that was only 600 folks. So, you know, paper applications in, in a city the size of ours, with the volume of applicants we're going to have, we determined that was going to be unmanageable based on other like-size cities' experience. So that leaves us with online applications. So again, we're trying to do the best we can with getting them access as much as possible, opening up all the computers that are available in the city for free, at housing sites, at senior centers, and things like that, and via the phone. And that's about the best we can do.
So could they do it via the phone?
Yes.
Okay, so I, no, I'm talking about, can I call somebody? If I have no, if, can I call via the phone and ask somebody, can you put in my information? Okay.
At this point, no. We are meeting with Ability 360. I don't know if they have maybe some kind of automated ability to do that, but we are going to learn from them to see if we can do something like that.
And the one issue with allowing someone else to enter in the data for you, it then becomes a liability, because if we are not, if you are then not made eligible or selected, then it's, Nicole, you entered my information in for me, and therefore, that's why I'm ineligible. So we don't allow for that type of assistance as well.
Okay. Councilman.
Yeah, thank you. I think Councilwoman Pastor has excellent, excellent points, and not, not everyone has access to technology, and we have to change that. In fact, tomorrow Subcommittee, fee Subcommittee, we're, it's all about that topic, or at least that's a large part of it. Excellent points made. I'm glad to hear that it's also a concern, and I think you actually make an excellent point, Ms. Stotler. I think you're right. If, you know, we do have technology, so how do we, how do we use it? And I think, I think the real question in my mind is, you know, if we were to go, first of all, if we were to go paper, with paper applications, people would still have to go someplace, right? So in this case, they're going to a library, a community center, a senior center, or a housing site. So that, it's going to be the same difference there. I like that it could, now, I'm assuming it's every, any one of our 17 libraries?
Any place that someone can get access to a computer, they may.
Okay, I got you. I hear what you're saying. So I guess, which brings me to my, the point that I really wanted to make, it's in how we promote this. It's in how, you know, are we, how are we getting this into the neighborhoods, into, how are we getting this information to the people who we feel could absolutely benefit? And, you know, they're, so I guess that's, that's my question. If, whether it's paper form or paperless, people still have to get themselves from wherever they are living or staying, over to this place to apply for it, right? So that's, I don't, in my mind, that's not necessarily the issue. It's more to do with, you know, how it, how it's being promoted, and if you have someone, one of our seniors, or one of our veterans, or whoever, someone who hasn't been, hasn't had access to technology, who is afraid of technology, if they get themselves to any one of our 17 libraries, or community centers, or whatever, will, is there someone there that can help at least log them on, let them know, here are the steps, here are the, I'm not going to input your information for you, but here's the website and the steps. I just think we have to make it as easy as we possibly can for people to actually apply, because at the end of the day, let's think about who needs this service, and a lot of them are people who, who, you know, who don't have access, and I think we take a lot of this for granted, you know? And we're fortunate, because it's so, you know, prevalent in some of our lives, that we do take technology for granted. But, you know, that's, the reality is, there are a lot of people who really can benefit from this. So I think you articulated very well on your opinion on why we should do online, and I would, I would agree with you, frankly. But I think to Councilwoman Pastor's point, you know, the fact is, you know, there's, there are people who, out there who really need it, and how do we, how do we link them to this, so that they can actually feel good about applying for that? So I think that's more my question. Are we, are we promoting this to the Arizona Republic? Print media? Is it just online messaging? Is, are we sending it over through to neighborhood services? I mean, how many newsletters do we, or do we poss, do we have, does the city, is the city linked to, you know? So I'm assuming you've looked at all of those things?
We have, Councilman Valenz, I'm sorry, Councilman Valenzuela and Vice Mayor Gallego, we have looked at all of those. It is sitting on the front page of phoenix.gov as it stands right now, and on the Housing Department's page. We have sent out press releases. We have sent out notices to our local community partners, so DES, the local churches. It has been reported in the Republic. We will be doing a interview with KJ Zizi tomorrow. We have had interests from the news media as well to present on this particular topic. And I agree with you, it is about the messaging. And what we want to make sure that people understand is that this is the way that we're going to move forward with the application process, but we want to engage other people who can assist those individuals who may need some assistance in applying. And we are putting together frequently asked questions, which will be posted to our website, which will help everybody understand, this is how you get through the process. The application is not complicated. But there are some steps to go into it, and so they will know what types of information they'll need to come prepared with in order to complete the application, income statements, those kinds of things, social security numbers. But that is our goal, is to reach out to the partners and ensure that they have awareness of what's happening, so that they can assist anybody who might be a constituent of theirs.
I appreciate that you are also, one of the partners that you mentioned are clergy.
Yeah.
You know, and that's an excellent place to start as well, so thank you.
Could you elaborate a little bit on your comment about sort of liability? Is that only for city employees, or could I go to the area agency on aging, if I were a senior citizen, and get their assistance?
And I use liability loosely. I apologize for that. But what, what we have had in the past is a situation like what I brought up, where someone has been deemed ineligible, and then it has come back and said, well, you know, this Housing Department staff person helped assist me with completing my application. They are responsible for the reason that I wasn't made eligible, as opposed to, you know, I have a criminal background, or I'm income-eligible, and those kinds of things.
But I could go to the foundation for senior living or area?
Yes, you could.
So people do, there are, because I can, I was just sitting here thinking, there's probably 20 nonprofits in our community that help people find housing.
Yes.
I may have just shown how few I, there's probably more than that, but there are a lot of agencies that have expertise in helping navigate the social service. But there are a lot of agencies that have expertise in helping navigate the social services. And so, it's reasonable to think that those individuals may be reaching out to their clients and helping them.
Absolutely.
There are, there's personal identifying information is the only cautionary thing that we would say to applicants, is the social security numbers or income, very, you know, important information that has to go in. So, they would have to be very careful in choosing who they ask to help. But many of our nonprofits do that on a daily basis. They qualify people for loans and other things, so they would be, they would be a safe place to go. So, that's the only cautionary thing that we would have.
Anybody who's not involved in the eligibility determination process could assist someone in completing their application, so yes.
Wonderful.
The one thing I would like to offer, just to piggyback on what Cindy said, is that we need to make sure that our applicants understand that in no way, shape, or form is there a fee to apply for the Section 8 program, and that they should be cautioned from receiving assistance from anyone who wants to charge them to do so.
And Go Section 8 hosts this website, and they have the capability to have a huge amount of interest all at once, or?
No, Section 8 is actually our vendor who determines our rent reasonable process.
Oh, a grantor.
And it also lists affordable units of all kinds, and so, it's not just Section 8. The vendor that we have for hosting this is a company called Yardi, and they are the manager of our business system.
And they are ready for what could be an impressive amount of interest at once?
They have, they've done this for other agencies. They had a standard application that we've looked at, modified a little bit for Phoenix, and they're ready, we've been talking to them for months, and they are ready to go.
Fabulous. Councilman Pastor had a question.
How long does the application take?
Well, it depends on the individual's family. So, if it's one person, it may take you five to 10 minutes. If you have more people to enter, it may take you, you know, 10 or 15 minutes. It's not a very long application process, it's not going to take you hours.
Okay. And the reason why I'm asking is because there's five days, and I'm thinking, you know, as you stated earlier, there were 600 people for 50 slots. So, I'm thinking, now, okay, I'm going to go and figure out what library, or community center, or senior center. What happens if, and this has happened to me, in a testing situation, where everybody gets online, everybody's entering, and the, and the system crashes? What are we prepared for?
So, Vice Mayor and members of the Subcommittee, we have been working closely with the IT Department, Deputy Director Roy Hughes and his staff, and ensuring that the city system, which is the link that you're going to get into the application from, is going to stay up. They are very much aware of this, they are very much aware of how much demand we're going to have. We've had many, many discussions about this. They will have people ready to respond if there are any problems with the city's servers. And we have done the same confirmation with Visual Homes, with Yardi, the company that's hosting the applications we have. We continue to talk to them every week to ensure that they are ready for this, and the system will not go down.
And then, are you working with the schools, with the parent liaisons?
Councilwoman Pastor, we have not directly worked with them, but that is certainly somebody that we can reach out to.
So, yeah, may I suggest that you work with the parent liaison within all the communities? And that's probably another way they can get access to computers and be able to, and I'm sure some of the parents probably know of some families that qualify. And in the future, I don't know how this works out, or how it plays out, but it would be nice to probably get your guys a team of key leaders and actually walk them through, or train them through the process of the application. They're kind of your go-to persons for multiple questions, and that way, you have a nonprofit, faith-based, schools, libraries, everybody in the community aware what's going to happen. So, when everything happens, people are on board to assist. Because I could see, and the library, as much as we love our libraries, don't have a large amount of computer access. So, if everybody's standing in line, and then you have 30 minutes, I guess, I think it's 30 minutes, the kids tell me, 30 minutes to have access, and then you're cut off. And so, that may be another dynamic, depending on how quickly they can type and do the things that they have to do. So, I'm just thinking of, I'm a detailed person when it comes to these things, because you want to make sure it runs smoothly and efficiently, and that they have a good experience. So, I want to thank you for looking. Obviously, you did all the details and with all the questions, and so, thank you for doing that. And I look forward to seeing the success of it. So, thank you.
Could you speak a little bit to other peer housing authorities or neighbor housing authorities, and what preferences they do, just so we can get an understanding of what other resources and priorities there are?
Vice Mayor Gallego, I think that the other, the local housing authorities have very similar preferences to ours. There's not a lot of deviation in that. What you will see, if you were to look in their administrative plans, is just the point structure, but the point, it's not really any different. They are very similar to the ones that we have outlined here in the city of Phoenix.
We, as human trafficking, human trafficking has been another issue where we've put a lot of attention as the city. Is that something that people ever look at as a preference, victims of human trafficking? Is there, is that a challenge that we've seen, housing?
Vice Mayor Gallego, members of the Subcommittee, that's something certainly that we could look at with our human trafficking efforts and the housing that's available to those victims. Typically, with the individuals in the, that are trafficked, they go through a pretty intense program before they actually are housed. But we can certainly work with all of our nonprofit partners that work in the human trafficking, and see if there is a need, and then take a look at that for next year as we prepare to come before the Subcommittee on Preferences.
Wonderful. I would just love it, as we open up the application, I think, if we can collect a little more data that will give us, as policymakers, more opportunities to respond and use this as a tool to show that we are an inclusive community that values and tries to help people through difficult situations, because this is an important tool. And we don't open it up very often, so we want to make sure that when we do, we do the right thing. Also, hope that as you talk to the media, you can talk about that really, it's the landlord who chooses, who, what type of payment to accept, and that really, that's a very important factor in this program, and something we get a lot of questions about. And then emphasize that we are doing a lot of training and support for both residents and landlords to make sure this is a win for the communities, as well as a win for the residents and the landlords. We really want to be good neighbors as much as possible, and there have been a few, very, very few bad apples. And we need to make sure that we're, we have the system in place to make this a win for the neighborhoods that are welcoming Section 8 residents. An exciting time for us, thank you for that update.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 15, zoning text amendment regarding tobacco-oriented retailers.
Morning, Vice Mayor, members of the Subcommittee. This item, as you recall, was before you a couple of months back, and at that time, the Subcommittee amended it back to the Planning Commission to address a couple of additional issues. The genesis of this text amendment is a response to our 2002 text amendment for tobacco-oriented retailers, and that put in a spacing requirement and added some square footage limits back in 2012. A couple of things have happened since then. Obviously, e-cigarettes are a new product that was not addressed in the original text amendment, and we have had some concerns that came out of Council District 5 and Council District 3 constituents about some of the issues regarding our spacing requirements and our exception square footage, footages. So, this text amendment addresses all of those issues. And with that, I am going to turn over to Sandy Hoffman, who's going to walk us through that, and then we also have Ms. Teresa Hillner up here, who's available for any questions.
And I failed to introduce our Planning Director, Ellen Stevenson, so thank you for doing a better job of introducing your team.
Morning, Madam Chair, Subcommittee members. That's on. Sorry, thank you. So, what the text amendment will do is basically increase the separation that we have now from 500 feet to 1320 for schools, parks, and daycare facilities. It will also add public recreation centers and homeless shelters. In addition, it will increase, oh, that's here, sorry, that's what I just said, and that's next, establish the separation for some uses that we didn't have previously to 1,320 feet, which includes places of worship, dependent care facilities, daycares licensed by the state, and youth community centers that are 18,000 square feet or greater that are run by a nonprofit and have a formal program for youth under 18 years old. What the text amendment will also do is reduce the space area that is allowed for you to be exempt from these spacing requirements from 15% to 5%. And a cleanup item is, we're trying to remove a section that refers to the spacing between structures and the zoning ordinance, because it's covered in the building code. And with that, staff requests that the Neighborhood Housing and Development Subcommittee recommend approval for the City Council for the text amendment, ZTA 3-15.
Wonderful, thank you. We, the City Council challenged our team a lot on this one, so thank you for rising to the occasion, and we got a lot of great input from our village planning and planning commissioners. We have a card from Brian Hummel of the American Cancer Society and the Cancer Action Network marked in favor of this. Thank you to the Cancer Society for their fight against cancer. Do my colleagues have any questions?
No questions, but just a comment, thank you so much. You know, I believe that that Subcommittee then, I believe Bill Gates was on it, right? Because I remember working with Councilman Gates. You mentioned Council Districts 5 and 3.
Yes, Vice Mayor, Councilman Valenswayle, yes. It was really an outgrowth of discussions in your district, principally at first, with some of your constituents, that you put together a meeting on. And then, subsequent to that, became an issue in Council District 3 along 32nd Street Quarter, and that's when Councilman Gates.
And certainly, obviously, beyond those council districts, a lot of neighbors don't realize which council district they live in, right? They live, work, celebrate, many times, in different council districts, and they don't realize it. So, this is something that's been impacting our community, and our youth especially, and everyone, for that matter. So, thanks for answering the challenge. And I don't think we have any of the members of our Planning Commission here, but I want to thank them as well, all of our Village Planning Committee members. You know, this is important for the health of our city, so I appreciate it.
Do we have a motion?
I move.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much. And we will welcome the same team up for item 16, request to amend the zoning ordinance to update medical marijuana regulations. And we have one card on this agenda item. If anyone else wants to comment, please feel free to fill out a yellow card. Director Stevenson.
I'm Vice Mayor and members of the Subcommittee. You'll recall from a discussion we had back in February, where this was an information item, this is really an outgrowth to update our medical marijuana zoning ordinance as a result of a few different items that I'm going to kind of highlight here, and then I'll turn over to Ms. Hoffman, who will walk us through that, the actual spacing requirements that staff is proposing as part of this process. And so, you'll recall that the Arizona Medical Marijuana Act was passed in 2010, and as part of that, it gave the Arizona Department of Health Services rulemaking authority. In 2011, they adopted rules that spaced out dispensaries, one per CHA. And a CHA is a community health analysis area, of which we have about 15. They're roughly approximate to the Village Planning Committee system within the city that you're all familiar with. One of the things that was an outgrowth of those rules is that after the first three years, you could move your dispensary, if you had one in a far-flung part of the state, into a more populous part of the state. And then, the other part of the original initiative to understand is, there was a built-in escalation clause that for every 10 regular pharmacies that opened in the state that got licensed, like your Walgreens, CVSs, the Department of Health Services was required to allow one additional dispensary certificate, of which they have not really allocated any of those to date. So, what that would do, moving forward under the Arizona Medical Marijuana Act, is currently there's, well, 1,290 registered pharmacies, which means 129 dispensary certificates. We understand from the Department of Health Services that there's potentially up to an additional 30 certificates are going to be awarded sometime in the summer of 2016. That's why we have brought this item back to you in a fairly quick order, so we could get through the Village Planning Committees to get these rules adopted before any new dispensaries would come in. You'll recall back in February, we did talk about a bill that was being circulated in the state legislature at that time to address the ability of dispensaries to move back in. That was House Bill 2618. It did die in the legislature and not move forward. The other item that's out there to be aware of as you contemplate these regulations is, there is an initiative that is the Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Initiative. And as part of that initiative, they're out there gathering signatures today. They did turn in, I believe, about 200,000 signatures, and 201,158, as a matter of fact, on April 12th. They do need to have 150,642 signatures in order to be valid and put on the ballot. With that, the key component of that, as it relates to your deliberations on this issue, is it does include a grandfathering clause of any medical marijuana establishments that are in as part of the rules today would be automatically grandfathered in to sell recreational marijuana in the future. So, it's of particular importance to know that if that initiative is successful in the fall, we will take up an effort to write zoning requirements for those types of facilities, but everything that is established under Medical Marijuana Initiative today would be grandfathered in. And so, with that, I'll turn over to Ms. Hoffman.
Thank you. So, I'll provide a summary of what the text amendment will do. When you see MMJ up there, that's Medical Marijuana Facility, and that applies to cultivation, infusion, and dispensaries. So, what we're doing is creating a spacing requirement now for dependent care facilities, as well as youth community centers, so they'll be a quarter mile. In addition, we'll be adding a spacing requirement that's farther than it was currently for the spacing from the facilities to places of worship, from 500 feet to a quarter mile. And when there's currently no spacing between the dispensaries, cultivation, infusion, from homeless shelters, we are adding that to be also as a quarter mile. So, right now, we have the zoning from dispensaries to residential, you'll need to have a 500, excuse me, a 250-foot spacing. We are going to double that to 500 feet, but we're not changing the spacing from cultivation, infusion to the residential zoning districts. And currently, we have a spacing of 1,320 feet between a facility and a school, and we're keeping that just the same. There's also right now spacing between dispensary to dispensary of one mile, and we will also keep that and have no change. And dispensaries to cultivation and infusion, there's no change for that, it would still stay one mile. What we currently have, though, between cultivation and infusion is a mile spacing, but the Planning Commission recommended reducing that to one-third of a mile, so 1,760 feet. So, we did an analysis of the overall acreage within the city, and currently, with the current regulations that we have, we have about 4.1% of the city that's eligible for dispensaries. With the proposed changes that we are recommending, there would only be 2.3% of the city available for dispensaries. For cultivation and infusion, currently, we have about 13% of the city available, and with the staff proposal, where we would still keep the mile spacing, excuse me, the, yeah, the mile, the mile, thank you, mile spacing between cultivation and infusion, we would have about 11% of the city. But if we were to reduce it per the Planning Commission recommendation, there'd be 13% of the city available for cultivation and infusion. Now, cultivation and infusion, cultivation can occur in S1 and S2 zoning, more of the suburban ranch, and the infusion can only occur in the A1 zoning. When we took it to the 15 villages, we had six villages that approved it per the staff recommendation. We had four that approved it with modifications, and we had four villages that denied the proposed text amendment.
So, with that, you see the slide before you, a couple of recommendations. One, there's the Planning Commission recommendation, which reduces that spacing requirement for cultivation and infusion only to the 1,760. And then, the alternative recommendation would be per the staff recommendation, which is the 5,280 feet for those cultivation and infusion facilities. One other item to note on this is that in the last couple of days, some concerns have been brought up about odor related to these types of facilities. So, staff did do some research into what other cities like Denver are doing, and as part of that, you know, Denver does have a more robust odor enforcement program than the city of Phoenix does. They're a combined city-county form of government, so they have a Department of Health Services that's part of Denver, where we don't have that here at the city. And so, as part that's part of Denver, where we don't have that here at the city, and so as part of that, they do enforce some odor standards that are much stricter upon various uses, not just medical marijuana, where they actually have people that go out and they have equipment that's called a nasal ranger, that goes around and sniffs out where the violations are. We don't have the staff capabilities to do that at this time, and it would only be focused on medical marijuana, we have a lot of other uses as well, too, that would warrant some of that, and so it's not something that staff can endorse, a more robust enforcement system. But what we could do is work with the industry to come up with some requirements related to the building code for equipment that they would put on as part of these facilities to clean the air, to make sure that there are no odors getting out of the buildings, and then impacting the surrounding public. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful, thank you. If it's okay with my colleagues, I'm going to start with the cards, Ryan Hurley, marked in favor.
Good morning, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the Council, staff. My name is Ryan Hurley, I'm here today on behalf of Calix Development, they are a real estate investment and ownership company, they invest in industrial Class B and C industrial space. Currently, the space that is Class B and C is in low demand and has higher vacancy rates than other classes of industrial space in the city, and higher vacancy rates than other cities. My client and I believe that by going with the Planning Commission's recommendation, that it will allow these Class B and C spaces, which are currently, many of them are currently functionally obsolete and are vacant, and intended to, and will likely remain vacant, and we all know that the problems that vacant buildings can cause. So we are supportive of the Planning Commission's recommendation to reduce the spacing to 1,760 feet. We believe that this will be a net positive for the city by taking vacant buildings, activating them, actively managing them, increasing security, increasing the amount of jobs that are at these facilities, and increasing the potential property tax that is generated by them. So we would respectfully ask that you recommend approval and support the Planning Commission's recommended language.
Can I ask you an odor question?
Please.
One, we're considering, what are the next possible steps? If we directed staff to convene with industry stakeholders and discuss how to best address odor, is that a good next step, or could you speak to the issues surrounding odor, and what would be your advice to the City Council?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the Council and staff. Yeah, I believe that the industry would be happy to engage in that sort of discussion. Frequently, we've reached out to folks and tried to have a dialogue, and sometimes that's been successful, and sometimes it's been challenging just because of the nature of the topic, but we would welcome that opportunity, and I believe that there are a number of different best practices that can be enshrined into a building code or into an ordinance. One particular example would just be carbon filtration. I've personally have smelled the difference standing outside of a facility that uses carbon filters and one that doesn't, and you can be outside the door of a facility that uses carbon filtration and not smell it. If they don't, then it can become an issue, so we would welcome that dialogue and be happy to participate in that.
That'd be wonderful, and we have, I think, from my non-expert opinion, some buildings have done a great job with addressing odor, so we, I think, have some good stories to tell, but we don't usually focus our time on the good stories, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do anyone else have any questions for Mr. Hurley?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Fabulous, thank you. We have two cards marked in favor of staff's recommendation, Krista Severns and Bill Sheel. They're available to speak if requested, would you, either of you like to speak? Wonderful, all right, I will turn it over to my colleagues for questions.
Want to make questions, Councilwoman? You?
Or a motion?
The odor, that does, I do have a concern with that, because there is a difference between the filtration in the sense of what they're, what the company is using, and so some are, do their due diligence and make sure that that is taken care of and is properly secured, and so the cultivation centers that I have been able to visit, they've had those systems into play, and there is a big difference when you enter one of those buildings versus being outside and not even having a clue that it is, and so I would like to, for staff, to look, have a dialogue with the industry regarding odor. I don't know if we, we, how it works, but, or can you give me some guidance?
Yeah. So, Madam Chair and Councilwoman Pastor, what staff would do is, this is an issue that is best addressed in the building code, not the zoning ordinance. So before you, as a text member to the zoning ordinance, what we would do is work with the industry and our building official and our staff who oversee that area to come up with some regulations and make a modification to the building code that would require them to install certain types of equipment that address this issue as part of the construction process.
Wonderful, thank you.
Make the motion. Motion to approve Staff Recommendation Z-T-A-8-15 to amend the medical marijuana regulations within the city of Phoenix per staff recommendation, keeping the formatting corrections by the Planning Commission, and add a provision in each of the S1, C2, and A1 sections that states there shall be no emissions of dust, fumes, vapors, or odors into the environment from the premise. I think that kind of covers what we've...
That does, thank you.
Yeah.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
One of the points that I wanted to make is that this, this is very fluid, as we, as it, as, this is what it is now, and as the times change, and as the dialogue moves, we just don't know what it's going to look like in the future, and so I think we enter it with caution at this moment, but I'm sure we'll be back discussing this in the future, and so I just think that us is protecting our, not protecting, but listening around our neighborhoods and listening to everyone that we're operating in caution, so thank you for your good work.
And this is another one where our village planning commissioners, the industry, planning commissioners put in a lot of time, as did staff, so thank you for your work on this. We're going into uncharted territories for Phoenix, but learning from other states, and so appreciate your work on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee.
We have an additional call to the public, and I do not see any new cards, so we, Council member requests for additional information or agenda items. We have, particularly on the planning side, a fair amount of items coming forward, so we will be fairly busy, so if we have no additional requests, then we are adjourned. Thank you all.